Right, it's four, so we're gonna get started. All right, call to order, the regular meeting of the Governing Board of Education is called to order by myself, Dr. Melinda Anderson, at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, at the District Office Conference Center. We're gonna make a change to the agenda.
I have a, yeah, I have a motion to make, the motion, or an edit to the agenda, and it would be to lump, I can't see it on the screen, but the Governing Handbook, plus the four other bylaws, which are action items, plus this first one under Action Item B, all together into a workshop. So my motion is to amend the curriculum, or sorry, the agenda, and take this first action item, the other four, and the Governing Handbook, because all those are bylaws, and they relate to the Governing Handbook, which should be done by the Board at a separate meeting. That's my thought. That, that and the other part is that we can't take action on an item until that item is in the agenda, so we can't take action until we approve the agenda.
And that's what, your recommendation, I was gonna start by moving that action item. So do you have a motion to?
It's a motion to take-
Let me write it down.
Yeah, or Lanay can keep it in the notes, but the, the motion is to take Action Item B, that number one-
Action Item B?
Uh huh, that number one, and the Governing Handbook, which is in the Action Items section with the four bylaws that are in sequence, one, two, three, four, take all of that, and lump it into a Governing Board Workshop dealing with, sorry, a Board Workshop dealing with the Governing Board Handbook.
Okay.
Because all of the Board members, we decide the parameters and the norms on how we govern as a team, those bylaws are directly related to that, and how we conduct the meeting. So that's just my thought.
Can you tell me the numbers of the, the bylaws?
If, um-
It was number-
Bylaw nine, three, two, three, point seven.
Do you know, on the agenda, what item, is it item?
Yeah, I'll show you. My question is, if you scroll down, because Lanay's got it.
It should be one through four.
Okay, under, under action items, okay. Action items-
One, two, three, four.
One through four.
And where was the Governing Handbook?
One, two, three, four.
Yes.
And Governing Book. Okay.
That's just what we did, a year and some odd months ago, when we all did the Governing Handbook, we did it as a workshop, because it takes time.
Okay, do I have a second?
If I second that, but have another suggestion for the agenda, do you want that now, or do you wanna vote on this first?
What I would like you to do is second it, and then amend it. So, you, you have a second to move all of that?
Or we make a new motion after that, either one.
Yeah, what's your, I can, what's your suggestion?
So my suggestion is to take the public comments, and keep it as they have been for tonight. I think it's really important that we hear what they have to say before we deliberate, and I think that might be something else in the Board Workshop that we can discuss.
So that would be something separate, and I would recommend making a separate motion after we discuss this, because this is parliamentary.
Okay.
Okay, so do I have a second?
I'll give the second.
Okay, then I'm gonna motion to amend Dr. Komraski's motion, and just move the Governing Book to a workshop. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion or debate?
So are you, are you, is this too, we can only have one motion on the floor at one time, so are you amending that motion?
I'm amending your first, I made, I just made a motion to amend your motion.
To keep the bylaws there?
To-
On the agenda?
To only put the Governing Book in a, and strike all of your other information, the Action Item B, one, two, three, and four. So your motion is?
Yeah, yeah, I got mine. So you're, you're saying-
And I'm saying, I would like to amend your motion, strike everything except the Governing Book, and just put the Governing Book in-
A workshop.
A workshop.
Then I would say-
And, and then, and then you don't amend an amendment.
Okay, so then, for clarity, then, you would have to take the Action Item B1, you would have to move it into open session under those action items, because you can't take action-
Yeah, and I, thank you, I was gonna do that, because you told me to do it. So I don't believe we need to make a motion to move that, because it was in violation, or in conflict of, it's in the wrong spot, so we'll just put it, I, I thought we should move it between announcements and consent calendar, on page nine.
I wish I could scroll this thing, oh.
Right here.
Oh, right here.
So we'll move it between, after the readout, let's see, after the readout, after the recognitions, but before this consent calendar. And the reason I wanna do that is, I want to, this, this procedure is a work in progress, I want us to see how it plays out during this meeting. At the end, maybe we all wanna get rid of it.
Which aspect? You've totally confused me. Are you talking about number one?
I'm talking about number one, we're moving to, at, at the recommendation of Dr. Komraski, we're gonna move it between announcements and consent. Does anyone have a problem with that? Is anyone opposed to that?
Well, I was recommending moving it to the Action Items section, but what you're, are you, are you thinking because it supervises on the rest of the meeting?
Because it's, because it's procedural, I would like it, the procedure to be used throughout the meeting.
So are we talking about B1? Because if we're talking about B1, what I'd advocate for is that, in addition to the bylaws, to go into the workshop, and we can discuss this further right now and take the time.
I just amended Joseph's. Let's go back to the amendments to clean it up. Steve, you had a second?
Yes.
Okay, so let's call roll on the amendment to only put the Governing Board, so what it will be is that Joseph's motion to take the Governing Board will be moved to a workshop. Okay.
You're talking about the handbook without just the handbook, you're not talking about the bylaws, and you're not talking about Action Item B1.
So I need to know, I wanna know, I want Joseph to be in, okay, then let's, let's clean up the motion. Joseph, would you be willing to be in charge of that workshop, because you've done it before? Would you work with another Board member and be in charge of the Governing Book Workshop?
I think it's the presidential duty, but it's quite easy, we go through one thing-
Would you help me with it?
Yeah, yeah, what I was gonna say is, we go through one thing at a time, and we just get consensus. You have consensus on a change, you, Lanay records it, we move on. It can, it can go fairly well. If we hang up and debate, and we don't have a consensus, then it doesn't change, we move on. That's easy for you to do, because it's consensus-based.
Okay, so my feeling, my gut feeling right now is that the majority of the Board is not going to put everything into the workshop. Do we wanna vote on it, or do we want, or do we wanna just write the amendment, how we know it's gonna vote out, and clean it up?
I, yeah, so the amendment's changed, Jen, just to be clear, I, I'm just gonna say, it's no longer my amendment, it's been edited, to where just the Governing Board Workshop gets, the Governing Board Handbook gets pushed off to the workshop, all the action items remain, but one action item gets pushed in between the readout and recognition.
Are you saying that the Action Item B1 is going to open session tonight, or is that still gonna be discussed here? Because it was actually agendized prior to the approval of the agenda, so that's not even correct. So I'm sorry-
We, we all just said that, and now we're moving it after M, so we just discussed, we're gonna put it after M, we can't have it where it is right now. Dr. Komraski, Dr. Komraski already explained to me, it can't be where it is, so we're gonna move it to where it should be, and I would like to move it-
So it is open session, it's M, open session before consent calendar?
Yes. Do we want to go through the process of having these voting on amendments, or should we just restate the motion?
I know what the motion is.
Okay, so can we make, can we make the motion that we move the Governing Handbook to a workshop, and that Dr. Komraski and Dr. Anderson will be in charge of the workshop? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Lanay Culverell. Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
No.
Komraski?
No.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Do you want me to make a motion about where Item 1 should be in the agenda, or do we want unanimous, do we have unanimous consent, that it should go in open session, and that it could, I know there's some conflict right here, whether it should be an action item, or if I can consider it a procedural matter?
Item 1 should go in the workshop, that's where it technically should go.
Okay, that's not gonna happen now, because we just voted, so let's talk about where it's gonna go.
Wherever we can legally put it, I'm open for it, I don't care, whatever the Board decides.
It, it's really, the, the spirit of it is, I kind of wanna experiment with, I'm not trying to limit the time of debate, I'm trying to organize how we conduct our conversations. And I have told-
This isn't the right place, though, to deliberate on that, we just need to make the decision where it should go.
So are you okay, are you okay then, if it goes? Is there anyone opposed to having it go after M?
As long as the public is open for comments on it, because it would be an action item, yeah, so it doesn't matter where-
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving that to M, we don't need to, it's just an agenda change, and I don't believe we need to vote on that, because it was in the wrong place in the first. The next is approval of agenda, are there any other requests for a change to the agenda?
Yeah, this is just a point of clarity, back in November 2023, I'm pretty sure, I tried to move action items and information reports and reverse them, Mr. Schwartz flagged it, and said that that can't be done until we discuss it in the Governing Handbook, so technically, as a Board President, you cannot unilaterally move public comments from the beginning to the end, or information and action items be reversed, that has to be a Board consensus decision, that can't happen until we get to the Governing Handbook. So by technicality, unless the Board right now says, hey, I'm fine with where it's at, you have to have consensus, or it cannot be, yeah.
Okay, I move to have the public comments move to the end, end of the agenda, do I have a second?
We need to have a discussion on that.
Okay, let's discuss it.
So my feeling is, as we've looked at the precedent that's been set, and best practices, we're here to represent the people. We are not here to hope that people sit in this room, glean from us, and don't have questions. When they have something to say at the mic, it's really important to take that into the deliberation process. We have people who can't sit in this room for three hours, I wouldn't expect them to. I know this is strategic in some manner, but I really feel like, if we're representing the people, they need to be able to speak right where they've done it before. And if we decide in a workshop to continue the discussion, I'm open to that, but for tonight, I think it's best to let people speak, and be able to have the flexibility to go home if they need to, and not sit through three hours of the meeting.
Does anyone have a rebuttal?
I'm for keeping it in the beginning, but the other information reports, I'm believing that like it is, but I am for moving public comments to the beginning.
Could you repeat that, so that they can hear?
I'm for moving the public comments to the beginning of the meeting. The information reports, I'm fine with the way that is, if the Board is, but I think the public comments should be in the beginning. That's my thought.
So, this, this was not my idea, it was at the advice of several attorneys, and with consulting with security, so it wasn't something I came up with, it was brought to me, and I feel like the rationale behind it is valid.
Yeah, I, having sat through many public comments where people chastise members of the Board, and then get up and leave, and leave us sitting here without being able to respond, which we don't do anyway, I, I, I think it's a good experiment, let's see how it goes, we'll try it today, if it doesn't work, we can always revisit it.
And there, there's one more thing I wanted to say. The public has opportunity to speak throughout the agenda, and this is general public comment, so action items, consent items, information items, the public has the opportunity to speak throughout the agenda, so we are not canceling public comment till the very end, this is general public comments, and any action comments, they'll have the opportunity to speak on ahead of time. So I-
Glad you made that public, which is a good distinction, yeah, people need to-
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really important, because I think that there's been a lot of misinformation all weekend long on social media, in terms of the emails that I've received, that, because public comments are moved to the end, that people are not going to have any input as to the decisions that this Board makes, and that simply is not true, because if you wanna speak on an action item, you're going to be allowed to come, I don't know how many action items we have, do we have 12 action items maybe tonight? If somebody wants to come and speak for three minutes on each action item, before the votes are made, you're, that-
That's part of the process, yeah.
It's part of the process, it's your right to do it. So I think that it's really important that the public understand that we're not trying to curtail public comments, or trying to curtail speech, because you have every right to come to this podium before decisions are made on action, and speak to that action item.
The philosophies sound great, the technicalities are different. I know in talking with people for two years now, what their schedule-
So I'm gonna call point of order, because I am gonna work on addressing and taking turns speaking. So I just wanna make sure everyone had a turn, and then we're gonna, I really wanna go back to parliamentary procedure. I know it's gonna be hard, but I want to avoid arguing on the dais anymore. So I'm gonna have each person just ask, you can either say, Dr. Anderson, this is just out of the book, I'm not making this up, but I, my goal is to minimize arguing. So I just, before you speak, would you just let me know ahead of time? So you would like to have a rebuttal, so please?
My rebuttal is, I've spent two years talking to people in the community, and sometimes they have very genuine concerns that aren't on the agenda. We have busy moms and dads who are trying to pay their bills, take care of their kids, sometimes we have kids that wanna come forward and speak, and I think it's wrong to relegate them to the end. I think that they should be heard, have the opportunity to be here, and then do what they need to do. So I'm a no, no matter what, I'm for the people, but if the vote goes differently, it is what it is for tonight, and at least people will understand where we are at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Dr. Komraski? Okay. Oh, Mike?
There's a tension point. On the one hand, I'm not for moving, to, moving it to the end, I mean, there's even cases where it might be somebody very young, a potential student wants to speak, or a geriatric member, they can't, they can't handle five, six hours, and that's why I think the beginning of the meeting's good, but there is a silver lining, it's what Mr. Schwartz is talking about, there are aspects of public comments where we literally just downright get trolled for things that we haven't even conceived of saying. And if the action is taken, then at the end of the meeting, they won't be saying the same thing, because then they would've saw our actions on the dais, and then they wouldn't be able to say, but you're gonna do this and that, we didn't. So there is a silver lining, even though I'm against it going to the back of the meeting, that does stop, or it mitigates that, and it really is frustrating, as a Board Member's like, wow, I never said I was gonna do anything like that. And we get a lot of that in the beginning. The other, the other thread on that, and it's, and it's gonna relate to, every, every person has a potential to speak to an action item, I would like it on action items, that they don't speak until the Board deliberates, because even then, they won't be able to accuse us of something we haven't even conceived of doing. I've heard action item comments telling, accusing us of certain things that we're gonna do, it could be any one of us, and we're like, wow, that's, you read my mind, I wasn't gonna do that. I would rather have discussion, deliberation, counterarguments, than hear the public comments on those action items, then vote.
Okay, I, I actually agree with that. Can we call the question, and in the future, we can maybe make a spot for student comments, so that they are not out past bedtime, and then also implementing a different public comment on action. But for this item, let's call the question to keep public comments at the end of the agenda. Lanay, will you call, Earl?
You made the motion, who seconded it? Schwartz?
Schwartz seconded it.
Yes.
Schwartz seconded it, okay. So now, this is a motion to move, keep public comments at the end, correct? Is that what it is? Okay, keep public comments, all right. Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
No.
Komraski?
No.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. Okay, is there any other changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Having gotten a plethora of emails about neutral classroom policies, I would move to table it and, and put it in committee before we bring it back for public discussion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Well, I, I thought, well, okay, I just wanted to explore this with Mr. Schwartz, because it might be that this could be agendized for it to go in subcommittee, because this isn't gonna be voted on tonight by any means.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with him on that, there's no action gonna be taken on this, it's the first time.
Is that a second?
To-
To move it to-
A subcommittee.
Subcommittee.
And this is the-
Number seven.
The neutral classroom-
The neutral classroom policy.
I was, I was pretty much assuming that's what six and seven were both doing on information reports, so I agree. I would agree that there, there probably could be formations of subcommittees on both of those.
What, are you advocating for a discussion, continuing?
Yeah.
I'm confused.
Yeah, you can discuss on, on, on that action item, you can discuss it, it wouldn't be tabling, like, I don't, I don't think we're taking action on it, I think we are gonna discuss it, and go into subcommittee.
Okay, so Steve, you move to move Item 7 into a subcommittee?
Yes.
Joseph, do you second-
Pushing back to the later part of the meeting, in the subcommittee part, is that what you're saying?
He's moving to remove it off the agenda and information.
I'm moving to move it off the agenda, because of all the controversy I've heard, I know we're gonna have a ton of people here coming and speaking on it, and if we take it out of the agenda and move it to a subcommittee, that's gonna eliminate 20 or 30 comments that people are gonna make about it, because they see it on the agenda, and so they, I've gotten a ton of emails from people saying, you can't do this, and, and all the things, and it says, it's discussion, not an item that we're gonna take action on, but I think there's enough unrest in the community, that I wanna see it moved to a subcommittee, let the subcommittee discuss it, and then bring it back to the Board at some point, if we wanna make it a policy.
Could we kill two birds with one stone, and make your motion, I move to put this item in a subcommittee-
Yes, that's my motion.
And remove it from the agenda?
And remove it from the agenda.
Do I have a second?
But point, but point of clarity-
We should have a second before we discuss it.
I know, but this is probably gonna help you. I hear talk about moving it into a subcommittee, well, we have that action item, number six, is establish a new subcommittee, so instead of tabling the item, why don't you move it into a new subcommittee right there?
Item number six, on what page?
Yes, under action items, establish a new Board Subcommittee. Why table it, if we're gonna move it into a subcommittee, when there is the action item for that very thing?
Which Subcommittee was that?
Number six, on the action items, establish a new Board Subcommittee.
That, that is, is that one for the dual?
That's for the, that's for the dual language.
That's a dual immersion Subcommittee, it doesn't apply to this.
I, I understand.
So, so let's clean it up, let's do, I'm, I'm gonna do it. So Steve has a motion, do I have a second before we discuss it? Would you, to move it into subcommittee? Okay, there's no second, so the, it will, we'll leave it where it is on information. Sorry, thanks, Steve. The second one is, actually, I'm gonna make a motion, because to move my item, which is, let me turn to my right page. I have notes on my-
I have a question for the Superintendent, too, if I may, after you're done.
Hi? Just give me a minute. Do you wanna ask the question, while I'm looking through my notes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna motion for forming a new Subcommittee tonight, and the name of that is not inside this agenda, and so Dr. Woods said that we're just gonna put that into establishing a new Subcommittee. So that's my intent for calling out Action Item Six, is it could be latched to the formation, uh, formation of a new Subcommittee, unless, Dr. Woods, you had another action item in mind. That was it, so that, so point of clarity, it can be put on that.
So we are gonna revisit subcommittees.
Let's talk about it then.
Yeah, we're gonna revisit Board Subcommittees, because some Subcommittee's didn't get enough members signed up for, one Subcommittee we skipped altogether.
Okay.
So we're gonna revisit all Subcommittees. There's another Subcommittee gonna be for, that's planned, I hope that we can form it, and that one's mine, on dual immersion. And then the last thing is, I'm looking for my information item.
Number six?
Yeah, and it is, after consent, and it's, yeah, information reports, here we go. And what I want to do is, I want to, I, before, when we started working on the agenda, there were two action, there were two information items that were similar regarding parental notification. So I have mine, I've already know it's got holes in it, it's not the best, it was an idea to present. So there was another one similar about notification. What I would like to do is move that we form, I wanna, this is why this is a change to the agenda, I wanna pull my item, the first reading of proposed draft, new board policy 4119.24, that needs a lot of work. I wanna pull that off the agenda, and I wanna add it to Mrs. Weirzma's, Mrs. Weirzma's information that she previously pulled on notification, and form a Subcommittee called Special Topics for Further Review and Discussion. The Subcommittee, I think, should be myself, Mr. Barham, Dr. Woods, Mr. Arce, and Mrs. Lash, because this involves teachers, and it involves negotiations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do I have opposing views?
Yes.
On pulling this from the agenda?
I would say-
And putting it in a Subcommittee?
Why rename it, when it's directly related to parental notification, why rename it? Number, number one, and then I have-
Oh, I can keep it parental notification, if you like the Subcommittee parental notification, I'm okay with that. Okay.
And then, and then second, me and Mrs. Weirzma, we did agendize for this meeting, we both pulled off, it was two parental notifications, one from Chino, one for Placenti or Melinda, I want to submit that into your new Subcommittee, so that you guys officially-
I have it here, too.
You have it?
I have it, yeah.
Just in case, I'm gonna walk it over to you.
Okay, and that way, we don't have two groups of two working on the same item.
And just, and just one point, so that the audience knows, the Chino's policy avoids AB 1955 language, making about, making it about a change of, of records at the school district, Placenti or Melinda's, I'm gonna summarize it real quick, they make it about mental health. So those both avoid 1955 language, and empower the parents, and so now you have that.
Did you guys, I, I read through yours, did you, and I can ask you, it's not gonna be, be a Brown Act, I'll ask you later about any attorney recommendations, so I have-
Tony Romo made the policy from Chino, who, who I'm gonna be recommending we all bring on board.
Oh, oh my gosh, you're right, Tony DiMarco, why I said Tony Romo, my gosh. And then, I believe David Huff was the General Legal Counsel for Placenti or Melinda, so he would've
Okay, good.
Submitted that one, so you have two lawyers, yeah.
So do, we have a motion and a second?
I have a comment.
Okay.
So, I have worked tirelessly for the last 15 months on parental rights, Dr. Komraski and I worked together at one time, with the notification process that I spent time putting together, and decided to pull in order to be sure we had legal review it. These are things that have been a passion of mine, and I feel, at this point, what would be right and just is for me to be a part of that Committee. Mr. Barham, I understand that he would like to be involved, but I think the wisest thing would be to have somebody from, quote, the old guard with continuity, because I've put the work in, with somebody new, if that's yourself, for perspective, or perhaps it's Mr. Barham and I, but because I have held the line for so long, I would respectfully ask you that I would have a part in that. I have the relationships, the network, the conversations, the notes, all of the things that I believe would make me viable, and very much an important part of the process.
Okay, so it sounds like Mrs. Weirzma would like to amend my motion, and replace Mr. Barham with herself, Mrs. Weirzma- Mr. Barham with herself, Mrs. Weirzmann. So instead, it would be the subcommittee would include at least myself, Mrs. Weirzmann, Dr. Woods, Mr. Arce, and Mrs. Lash. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay.
Discuss.
Does anyone, would you guys like discussion, or should we vote on it?
I'll make a point.
Okay, Emile would like to make a point.
And my point is, is that if we're going to call this policy parental notification, we weren't calling it that. Dr. Anderson and I actually wrote this policy. You two are just pulling it from what already exists, and I think that when you actually sit down and write the policy from scratch and pull the edge codes, pull the penal codes, we take ownership of the policy in a more substantive, explicit way. So I'm going to respectfully disagree, and I'm very invested in this policy. I mean, it took us hours to sit down and write this policy, and, and I, it does still need work, because there's a lot of moving parts to this, when you consider AB 1955 and where it is in the courts. But, you know, we spent a lot of time, hours, and I feel like I know what I wrote, and I feel like I've read Placentia or Melinda, and I've read Chino, and feel that I'm very, I'm at a point where I'm able to, I think with Dr. Anderson and the staff, to reconcile both of the policies, as well as the one that we spent hours writing.
I know you've spent hours, but I actually.
I would like, before, we were going to take turns. One of my concerns with working with Mrs. Weirzmann is I've been reaching out to board members, and I've tried to contact you, and I need to work with someone that I can have communication with and a professional working relationship with. So it's hard if I, if I reach out and I, I try to communicate and I don't receive a response. So right now, my, my preference would be to work with Mr. Barham, because I can work with Mr. Barham, and I've worked with him extensively. He returns calls and texts.
The reason I haven't returned your calls is, and I have a stack of emails and misinformation and lies that you've sent out to the community. So when we sit down in a board workshop, we'll hammer that out, but that is a disingenuous perspective to bring in. I literally had the mic cut and lights turned down as I tried to read to parents the letter and the time that I wrote. And though I respect the work that you've done, I've put in the 15 months, and you and I have things to meet out in terms of the disrespect, the lack of integrity, and the misinformation that you have put out about my work and who I am as a person. So when we work through that, and we will, then that's going to change. But for you to relegate me outside the group, when I have tirelessly fought for this, would be wrong.
Okay, so I think that settles that. It'd probably be better for me and Mr. Barham to continue to work on this. Do?
And I want to make another comment.
Okay, and remember, we have a lot in closed session to go over. So if we know where we're headed with this vote, I think we should vote and move. Can I call the question? We've all taken our turn.
No, 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 I haven't got to respond.
Oh, you haven't? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Komroski.
I would validate, Emile, when you say you've worked on this tirelessly, I understand that. But I pull from policies that have been battle-tested by lawyers that have, one, one district's being sued by Bonta, and that is, that is already resistant to AB 1955. And so in that sense, I would say, I hear you, but then also, I mean, this is, this is just my opinion. In, in number six, subsection B, it says, parents slash guardians may be involved. I don't want a maybe parental notification policy. I want a real parental notification policy, a robust one. And what that does is it validates the work you're doing, but it also takes in, into consideration the policy of Chino and Placentia or Melinda. I want more robust, so it's not an elimination of one versus the other. It's bringing it all together the best possible way to empower parents.
So I feel like the best place to, yeah.
No, I, I totally agree with you.
I agree, too.
I want it to be robust, but I think the way that it's robust is if you've invested the time in writing a policy, you know it, it's going to be easier for us to reconcile. And in addition to that, I think what's very important here, and something that we're missing, is that no matter what happens, once these policies are reconciled, they have to be bargained.
Mr. Barham, we have attorneys that are on time, and I need to call the question.
Okay, but they need to be bargained. I just want to make this statement.
Yeah.
And I know people don't like hearing this, but you need a relationship with your associations if we're going to get these policies across the finish line. And I feel like we're developing that relationship, and I think that that, that means something as well.
So do I have a second for?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Our attorney is on the clock, okay.
Okay, can we get back to policies about education? Please call the question, so we can move forward.
Okay.
Let's talk about schools, children, and not wasting money.
Okay.
And let's leave this policy to the people who have worked on it. You call the question, and we'll vote.
I did want to offer myself to be in the subcommittee.
What was that?
I did want to offer myself to be in the subcommittee.
So let's start with, you would like to amend it to say, Dr. Komroski.
And Dr. Melinda. Because I think Mrs. Weirzmann's reasoning is good. Somebody from the old guard that knows about the continuity is also important, too. Now, if that doesn't go anywhere, that's fine, but that's my recommendation.
So let me clean up the amendments. Dr. Komroski would like it to be amended, that it say, Dr. Komroski, Dr. Woods, Mr. Arce, et cetera. Do I have a second? Okay, the motion is done. Mrs. Weirzmann would like to amend it to say, Mrs. Weirzmann, Dr. Woods, Mr. Arce, and Mrs. Lash. Do I have a second? Okay, the most, you want Mrs. Weirzmann? Okay, let's call the vote for Mrs. Weirzmann to be added.
Schwartz?
No.
Weirzmann?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Okay, lastly, do, I'm going to call the motion. I move to refer information from report item six, and the information provided, Mrs. Weirzmann, to a new board subcommittee. We can call it parental notification, and that subcommittee would be Mr. Barham, Dr. Woods, Mr. Arce, Mrs. Lash. Is there a second?
Second.
Will you call, Rul?
Does that one include Dr. Komroski, or it does not?
We just, no, that one failed.
I didn't have a second.
He didn't have a second. Okay.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzmann?
No.
Komroski?
No.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
The motion is approved, three to two.
Okay.
Okay, is there any more agenda items to be discussed?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so what number is it? What, the neutral policies classroom?
Seven.
That was number six?
Seven.
Seven?
Oh, number seven?
So that is still going to, that's still up?
That's still on the agenda.
For discussion.
That did not pass for discussion, and we've already voted on it.
If I could, when I made my motion to remove the item, I meant to remove six and not seven, so I apologize.
Okay, so.
I was okay with seven staying.
Oh, you're okay with seven?
I just, I just.
That's okay. Six is in committee, seven's still there. So next is, I move to approve the agenda with the, with the existing changes that were made. By pulling item number six, we're going to keep the public comments at the end. What other change did we?
Moving the item, action item to action items.
Moving action item, yeah, moving that to above.
And the governing board to a.
And governing board.
To a private workshop.
To workshop. Okay. Lenee, please call Rul.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzmann?
Yes.
Komroski?
No.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion was adopted, four to one, and now, in accordance with government code 549577, what was that?
No, no.
The board will now meet in closed session for consideration of items listed in section F. Do we have public comments?
Yes, we have one.
We have one public comment. The governing board welcomes public comments. This is the time for closed session public comments. Any person wishing to provide public comment? What was that? Oh. Public comment to the board is required to attend the meeting. Speakers are limited to three minutes, to a maximum of 30 minutes per item for comments on the closed session agenda item. Who is, who do we have?
Edgar Diaz?
Oh, Mr. Diaz.
That's okay. I'm still great.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.